Your faces sometimes make your faces sometimes make me laugh.
Go.
Good evening. I'd like to call the August 12th, 2024 meeting of the Dare County Board Education to order. We're meeting in the Dare County Administrative Building in Manio and the time is 5:00 PM. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment of silence. Ms. Bassnight, welcome. Thank you for coming out and supporting the Board of Education. And we thank what you and the other commissioners do for Dare County Schools. And Ms. Balance stepped in for me at your last meeting, thanking you for the funding for the staffing increase. We certainly do appreciate that. All the funding that the commissioners give us, but this year, that 1.6 and given the bonuses and incentives has been very appreciated. So now I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Woody.
Hey, I want to welcome everybody that's watching online and those that are here, student revisers, first official meeting, welcome. Excited to, I'm excited to see the great things that are going to happen this upcoming school year. So with that, with Ms. Elizabeth, would you lead us to the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That wasn't so bad, now was it? First order of business this evening is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
We have a motion by Ms. Balance, who I second.
I have a second.
Second by Mr. Payne. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, aye carries. Mrs., do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
We're now to move to the announcements and I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Bassnight.
Thank you, sir. I mean, sorry for making too much noise here. Thank you, sir. One thing that I did want to announce is that two of our schools in Dare County had been randomly selected to participate in the online North Carolina Youth Tobacco Survey during the fall semester of 2024-25 academic year. The survey relates to students' attitudes, behaviors, and knowledge about tobacco use, intent to use, exposure to tobacco use, and exposure to tobacco marketing and advertising. While I'm reading this information, I'm going to have Ms. King and Erin, if you would, pull up that data from the Department of Health and Human Services. This is some of the information that they received from the surveys. The extensive growth of e-cigarettes over the past few years is putting a new generation at risk for nicotine addiction. The North Carolina Tobacco Survey plays a critical role in understanding the scope of youth tobacco use, especially the vaping problem among youth in our state. The North Carolina Youth Tobacco Survey is North Carolina's primary source of data for youth tobacco use with respect to prevalence of tobacco use, cigarettes, electronic cigarettes, smokeless tobacco, cigars, et cetera, exposure to secondhand smoke, minors' access and enforcement, knowledge and attitudes, media and advertising, school curriculum, and tobacco cessation. The North Carolina Youth Tobacco Survey is exempted from the Parents' Bill of Rights law and does not require active parent permission as is explained on Page 11 of Session Law 2024-1, Section 2.8. Survey administration procedures are designed to protect students' privacy and allow for anonymous participation. Responses cannot be traced back to an individual. No one else will be able to see those responses. There are no personal identifiers. Reports do not include names of participating counties, cities, school districts, schools, or students. The Youth Tobacco Survey includes approximately 65 tobacco-related questions, and the average student completion time is only 10 minutes. Schools can choose when to administer the survey between September 30th and December 20th of 2024. The survey, which was given, it has been given every year, every two years since 1999, is only administered in random, selected middle and high school classrooms. This year, Manio Middle School and First Flight High School were selected to participate by the State Department of Health and Human Services. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bassnight. Next is the student advisories. Hold on.
I'm curious to what you guys think about the tobacco surveys. Does it, how do you feel about that? Go ahead.
How accurate is it? I feel like there could be a lot of bias in something like that, people, you know, not telling the whole truth, or, you know.
Yeah, okay.
I think that nicotine in schools is a very prevalent issue and it's only getting worse. And I think that the tobacco surveys are a good tool, but I'm not sure if the people that may be taking them may be honest and that's just a concern.
I believe that tobacco, nicotine is a big issue in our schools and we need to take charge on it. And yeah, we need to take charge.
You think that it being anonymous and all that helps in getting accurate data, or do you think it's just, they don't buy into it? Your peers?
I think it can definitely help, but I know that, you know, asking, it's illegal to, you know, possess tobacco. And so you're asking people about how much they know about, you know, something that's illegal, they're gonna not always tell the whole truth.
Right.
I think that trust in like who, maybe who's approaching the person that is being interviewed about it is a big thing because they don't know if it's a cure or not, but I don't know.
Do you guys, I'm sorry if I'm indulging too much, but do you, I'm really interested. Do you guys have ideas on things that could be done in the school to curb it a little bit more in your school? Or is that something you would like, could think about and get back to us on?
Yeah.
Okay. Talk about putting someone on the spot, right? But at least you're all in the same, you guys are all in the same spot. So, yeah, keep that in mind. See if you can come up with some solutions for us.
Yeah, it definitely needs to be addressed.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Good evening. I've got the highlights from each school in my district. First up, Kitty Hawk Elementary. Kitty Hawk Elementary's open house for kindergarten to fifth grade is on Thursday, August 22nd, from 1:00 to 3:00. Kitty Hawk Elementary is excited about the new PBIS theme as they catch the wave of kindness. Throughout the school this year, Kitty Hawk Elementary is looking forward to seeing the students return to school. Next up, First Flight Elementary School. First Flight Elementary's open house is on Thursday, August 22nd, from 3:00 to 5:00. Students and their families can come in to meet their teacher, bring in school supplies, and get excited about our 24-24 to 2025 school year. Today, First Flight Elementary invited all kindergarteners and their families to come to First Flight Elementary School for Popsicles on Playground. First Flight Elementary wants to make the kindergarten transition a friendly and welcoming environment to our new flyers. Next up, First Flight Middle School. Everyone at First Flight Middle School is excited to see our students on the first day of school, August 26. First Flight Middle School will hold their open house on Thursday, September 5th, at 5:30. We hope everyone will attend and encourage their child to be their tour guide where they can introduce you to their teachers, show you their schedule, and hold meaningful conversations about what First Flight Middle School is all about. Go Seahawks! Next up, First Flight High School. Join First Flight High School this Thursday, August 22nd, from 5:00 to 7:00 for our open house at First Flight High School. Students and their families are invited to pick up their schedules and explore the school, get a sneak peek of their classes and building excitement for the 2024-2025 school year. Our fall sports teams and bands, band, has kicked off their practices and we wish all our students a successful and inspiring, inspiring year ahead. Go Nighthawks!
Give us your name and the school you represent.
My name is Emerson Mann and I represent First Flight High School.
Thank you. No, he didn't. No, he just got into the, talking about Kitty Hawk Elementary. But he didn't give his name. He didn't share his, we wouldn't, everyone.
You don't have to be so technical. He did great.
He's done a great job.
Grab that microphone. There you go.
Give us your name and.
Hi, I'm Tobias Fleckenstein. I represent Manio High School. I'm here with the school board highlights from my district. First of all, Nagshead Elementary School. Nagshead Elementary would like to welcome back all of their wave riders. Don't forget that they will be hosting their open house event on Thursday, August 22nd, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. If you're a parent of a future kindergartner, please be on the lookout for your staggered entry letters that were mailed out today. They're also excited to announce that Nagshead Elementary School has adopted a pelican as their new mascot. They are still the wave riders but are welcoming the pelican as the newest member of the Nagshead Elementary family. Students will be selecting slash voting on a name at the start of the school year. Stay tuned to find out what the name will be. Here's to a great school year ahead. Surf's up, dive in. Next, Manio Elementary School. Manio Elementary welcomes back all of their K through 5th families for an open house on August 22nd from 2:30 to 5:00 PM. Preschool parents will then have an opportunity to come to a parent information session on August 21st from 2:00 to 3:00 PM, and preschool-only open house on August 30th from 9:00 to 10:00 AM. Manio Elementary looks forward to continuing their mission where all aspire to love, nurture, and educate every child so they can rise up to any challenge. Next, Mania Middle School. Mania Middle School will be hosting an open house on August 21st for sixth graders and another on the 22nd for seventh and eighth graders, both from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. Students and, well, students will pick up their schedules and visit their classrooms and teachers, as well as tour the school. Mania Middle School is looking forward to seeing all of their Braves families. Last, Manio High School. Manio High School has been fortunate enough to provide staff development for a number of faculty this summer. They have also provided opportunities for staff to work on their curriculum. Manio High School would like to invite you to their open house on Thursday, the 15th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. Students will be able to meet their teachers and receive their schedules. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Fairbanks. I'm representing Cape Hatteras and I'm here to give the highlights on the Hatteras Schools. Cape Hatteras Secondary is already back in full swing. CHSS marching band students began practice last week along with CHSS volleyball country and the CHSS Drama Club, who began rehearsals for Harry Potter and the Cursed Child today. Dual-enrolled students will begin their College of the Albemarle classes this Thursday, August 15th. Cape Hatteras will be hosting open house for students and parents on August 22nd from 4:00 to 6:00 and are looking forward to an amazing year. As for Cape Hatteras Elementary School, the new theme this year is planting seeds of success, growing kind hearts, and cultivating strong minds. We not only want to grow our students, but we're also committed to growing community, community connections. CHS will serve as a platform to strengthen the roots between school, parents, and our community. To set this stage for this inspiring journey, we are thrilled to host a variety of supportive initiatives at open house. A free hair salon with eight generous hairstylists having volunteered their time to provide back-to-school haircuts for our students. Free eye exams by Dr. Blake Bourne will be on site, conducting comprehensive eye exams including checks for vision, alignment, stereo vision, red reflex, and pupil health. As well as a free reusable water bottles, the Outer Banks Buddies will have a station set up in that CHS where students can choose a water bottle and stickers to make it their own. Along with school supplies, thanks to generous community members, we have a wide array of school supplies to distribute to students in need. They are incredibly excited to support their students and watch them grow throughout the year. And now for the special program recognition. The Velocity Summer Reading Camp was housed at Cape Hatteras Elementary, First Flight Elementary, and Manio Elementary, where K through third students in need of additional reading support from all five elementary schools attended Reading Camp throughout the month of July. All three Velocity Summer Reading Camp sites pulled a new foundational set of skill work called Walk to Read. In this framework, students were able to spend an hour each day in targeted skill groups geared towards the foundational skill instruction that they needed. This framework is different from what has been done in the past because it makes students across classrooms and grade levels to be able to maximize their instructional time. Here's a short video highlighting the innovative program.
Here, our summer reading camp is being housed at three of our elementary schools, fortunate to have over 350 students K through three. We have Reese Lambert, our NCDPI Early Literacy Specialist, who is kind of pioneering our new Walk to Read program that we're using at all of our elementary school summer reading camp and that we are also piloting next year in our elementary schools in specific grade levels.
I am really fortunate to serve Dare County as they work to support their students with early literacy instruction. We have worked really hard to design our schedule and our instructional framework around the five pillars of reading. So students need explicit instruction in phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. And we have worked to make sure that we are providing instruction in all of those areas so that they can really grow during this time with us during the summer. A big change to our framework for summer reading camp this summer from what we've done in the past is utilizing a Walk to Read framework. I learned about this framework at a professional learning with DPI, and I thought immediately, this is what we need to be able to serve our students and meet them where they're at. During Walk to Read, students move to a group that focuses on the phonics skills that they need. This allows teachers to spend a full hour on hitting the exact phonics skills that the kids in their Walk to Read group need, whereas in their classroom for the day, they might have kids who need four or five different levels of skills. So we can really maximize the instruction and the time by zooming in exactly on what they need.
I have a small group of children that come to my classroom each day, and they all are from different classrooms, and they're practicing their literacy skills, their foundational reading skills. We work on graphemes and phonemes. We work on the correspondence of those combinations in words we read and we spell, and we really grapple with the difficulties that each child is having, more on their level as a group.
It has been fantastic to put Walk to Read into place this summer here because First Flight had a similar structure throughout the school year, and their kids have really been able to be a model and a leader to our groups and our teachers. We've got teachers from every one of our schools, elementary schools, learning about Walk to Read this year.
I have seen with my students that have been coming daily, a big jump in their reading scores. It's filling in the gaps that they were missing and it's just helping them to be overall better readers.
Before the end of the school year, reading interventionists across the district helped us by administering phonics surveys that go along with the program that we're using for summer reading camp. So when those surveys were administered, we were able to pinpoint the exact phonics skills that every single kid at summer reading camp needs.
As the reading interventionist here at Cape Hatteras, I really see the benefit of working in these skill groups rather than by grade level. And so it's just an amazing phonics instruction program that we are using, and we're using Hegarty Phonics and UFLI. And all of our teachers have been using it here at Cape Hatteras. Even our instructional assistants have been trained in UFLI and they're able to lead groups as well. So it's an all-hands-on-deck approach to do these Walk to Read groups, and it's been an amazing time.
One of the things that we have really tried to make sure that we're supporting during summer reading camp is collective teacher efficacy, which we know has a huge effect size on student achievement whenever teachers feel like what they're doing is working. And Walk to Read has been a huge part of helping teachers feel like what they're doing is working. Walk to Read has given me the opportunity to really look at my approaches of teaching and my methods and really think about how I'm teaching and what I'm teaching with children more effectively and more intentionally.
We just are excited about our new school year, to have them come back and use what they have learned this summer and then just continue the momentum that we have built over the summer and just carry it over into a fabulous school year.
Thank you. Ms. Denise, would you like to recognize the other three that are our substitutes? Alternatesius.
So we've got our second training session today for the summer, and we've had a nice wacky lunch and then a little bit of practice for today. But we have here Spencer Whitebur, who's representing Manio High School. We have Skylar Wilson, who is representing First Flight High School, and then Caroline Fuller, who represents Cape Hatteras Secondary School. So I'm really excited that they're all here tonight and looking forward to a wonderful year and doing some great things. We made lots of plans today to, and we'll reach out to you guys to see if we can do some stuff. So thank you for having us on.
Yes. Thank you. Glad everyone could make it here tonight. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. At this time, do I have approval to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Mr. Brower has a motion, and Mr. Brower seconded by Mr. Woody. Any further discussion? All of in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Aye carries? Next, a report of items of information. Mr. Bassnight.
Thanks, sir. I would like to ask that our Director of Transportation, Mr. Alex Chandler, come forward, please. Looking sharp.
Yes, sir. What can I help you with?
Just wanted to share some good news that I got from the state about Mr. Chandler and his program. At the end of May, the annual review of the local, of the LEA's school bus maintenance program was conducted. During that review, four school buses were inspected, which represents about 10% of the LEA's school bus fleet, and one activity bus was inspected. In general, when a school bus inspector identifies a deficit, some deficits may be corrected immediately, while others require a more extensive repair requiring the use of a spare bus. During the inspection, zero buses were taken out of service. And just like in golf, a score closer to zero indicates fewer deficits found during the inspection. The average score for LEAs in the eastern region last year was 33.94. Thirty-three point nine. Eastern region, is that east of Raleigh or?
Yeah, east of 95, kind of the general, the general area.
Okay, so, all the schools east of 95 averaging 33.94. The 23-24 inspection score for Dare is 12.25. This inspection score, and I had to call Mr. Chandler about this because it was concerning, this inspection score is a full 2.5 points higher than last year, but considerably lower than the 33.94. Congratulations to our Director of Transportation, Mr. Chandler, and his staff for an outstanding accomplishment.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bassnight.
Yes, sir.
Went to Staples earlier today, and Mr. Chandler was out there recruiting for bus drivers, had a chance to talk to him. Did you get any takers today, Mr. Chandler?
I have a couple, a couple of interests.
Good, good. I want to thank Dominion Power for being out there also collecting school supplies. But yeah, talked to Mr. Chandler for a few minutes. Thank you for being out there.
So, you got drivers? Good. Outstanding day. It's getting better all the time. Ms. Bassnight, will you join us? Please, ma'am. We are thrilled to share this. The Dare County Alcohol Beverage Control Board and ABC Board member and current county commissioner, Ms. B. Bassnight, has supported us for some time in providing anti-drug and alcohol education programs in our secondary schools. Each year, the ABC Board pays for anti-drug and alcohol education special programming assemblies for our 612 schools. This year, Ms. Bassnight approached us on behalf of the ABC Board with the possibility of not only providing the special programming, but also providing each of our schools with a large screen monitor. These monitors will be used to run messaging on the negative effects of alcohol and drug use, daily announcements, and we can also use them to announce any necessary emergency messaging. Ms. Bassnight has worked with us to ensure that these monitors will be similar to the touchscreens that we are in the process of transitioning to in our classrooms. The cost of the monitor and the mounting bracket is approximately $900. Dare County Board of Education Policy 8220 requires that the board approve donations over $5,000, and we're requesting that the board accept this donation of 10 monitors at a cost of approximately $9,000. B, do you want to?
I would just like to say that part of the mission of the Dare County ABC Board is to fund alcohol education. And we do, as you said, we do fund the sold-out program, Roman Gabriel Sold Out Program in the schools, and we'd like to do a little bit more. So, you and Mr. Bassnight and I have talked, and we've come up with the idea of putting the monitors in the, in the schools to have the information shown there. We are working with Amber Griffith from Dare Casa, and we will meet and craft a message that we can put in each of the schools, and the ABC Board is thrilled to be able to provide this in our schools.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
I hope you'll approve it.
I do, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we request the, oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry, that we accept the Dare County ABC Board as, the donation from the ABC Board as requested.
It's not at the time to do that. It's later in the meeting.
Oh.
We didn't amend the agenda to do that. It's later. It's okay.
Well, I'm so excited about it. I just thought we'd go ahead and jump forward.
That's all right.
Next, I'd like to ask somebody that we watched on video just a few minutes ago, Ms. Katie Spruill, to come up and talk to us a little bit about the teaching and learning facilitators in our school. No. ASAP. Oh, sorry, ASAP.
I'll keep you straight. I promise.
Thank you. I appreciate you very much.
Chairman Twitty, members of the board, and Superintendent Bassnight, I am pleased to be able to provide you with some information about the after-school enrichment program. I am here presenting on behalf of Latonya Murray, who is actually the director of ASAP, but she was unable to be here tonight. So, um, do we have the presentation? There's me, pink. Hello. My gosh. Okay. So, this is just a little bit of information for you. So, ASAP is a five-star licensed regulated childcare program, so we have it at all five of our elementary schools. It offers after-school care for students until 6:00 PM each school day. It is staffed by 30 full-time and part-time staff members, and it offers a wide variety of activities such as homework time, structured playtime, and free play activities, and then arts and crafts. So, it's not just you sit and it's wild time. It's very structured. And snacks are provided for, by our school nutrition department. We currently have over 300 students between all five of our sites for the after-school enrichment program, and we, these are our current prices. So, we currently have, it's $60 for one child, and then it goes up $30 in an increment for each additional child. It's interesting because right now in North Carolina, after-school care costs are about $538 a month, but for us, it's only $240. So, that is, and we're going into that in a little bit, but that is just kind of a, an interesting little factoid. So, ASAP costs, so during the 23-24 school year, the monthly cost to employ the ASAP staff is about $65,626.37. That is not about, that is an actual amount, for a yearly total of $656,263.70. So, with the state pay increase estimate that is happening for the 24-25 school year, that will go up about $20,000 for this year. And the average income from parent fees and any Department of Social Service subsidy is about, or Division of Social Services is about $10,564 per month. And then also just a little interesting thing there is our DCS employees do get 50% off of that. So, that's, they don't pay the full price. They get a discount for, if they are an employee. And this is just a little bit of information from our surrounding after, or after-school programs in Dare County per week. So, we are significantly below what the, most of the other after-school programs are in Dare County, and we are the only licensed after-school program. So, and we're significantly below the, even the ones that are not licensed. So, just clear. So, the proposal is that we increase to $80 per week, and for two children, it would go up by $40 for each additional child. Rates have not been increased since 2019, and prior to COVID, they were being increased on a $5 increment each year. But since COVID, we kind of put a freeze on it because we had a stabilization grant that we had applied for, but that has now expired. That was part of, or was on the same timeframe as ESER, so those, that has sunset. So, we are looking to have this approved for the rate increase, and this is kind of just an FYI for you all of what the cost would be. Are there any questions?
So, we're asking the board if we can increase the after-school program fees by $20.
Yes. Yes.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
I hate to do that, but I don't know that we have a choice.
So, the, I agree, you know, and we don't, but at the same time, it makes it very difficult to run the program without getting an increase, and we do have, the Division of Social Services does provide a subsidy for any families that qualify for that. But, and we had a stabilization grant previously for the last few years, and with that, we were able to increase hourly pay rates because finding staff to work that, because it's kind of, it's a part-time job, and so, that it will offset, the increase will help offset, and we are still significantly below other after-school care.
Erin, can you back up to the page where it shows 2023, 24, and then the upcoming salary increase?
We have some employees that work during the day for us, and then they stay for ASAP.
Correct.
And just while they're pulling it up for the board's purposes, I think this was on for information and not action. What, are you looking for action tonight?
No, I think it had already been approved. It was just kind of an FYI.
Okay, so, you're not, you're not voting to approve it?
This was approved back in June, but this is just kind of information of why we made the proposal.
I was just going to say, we proved it at our budget workshop in June, but I just wanted everyone to see, I mean, it's great, the salary increases for employees, but you know, it does, it does come with a-
It's bad for one kid, but when you got like three or four.
They get a discount on that, too, but anyhow, I just wanted everyone to see that again.
Yeah.
That's clearly, clearly why we've done what we did back in June.
Yep, yep. Any other questions?
Thank you, Katie.
You're welcome, and I'm going to stay up here. Is that okay? I haven't provided my comedic relief yet. Do you want me to transition to my next one? But I'm going to invite guests up here. Okay. So, the next presentation we have is on our teaching and learning facilitators, and I would like to ask Reese Lambert, Denise Fallon, and Holly King to come up and join me because it's a teamwork makes the dream work event. I promise.
If you haven't noticed, Katie's got magic with words.
Or sarcasm, one or the other. Okay. So, Chairman Twitty, members of the board, Superintendent Bassnight, I'm pleased to be able to provide you, or we are pleased to provide you with an overview of teaching and learning facilitator. Right? So, we, if you look at this quote, I'm not going to read it to you, I won't insult you with that, but it is, this quote, for lack of better, to just summarize it for you, is that you have to, you can't just tell somebody how to do it. You have to have a consistent cycle and process and follow-up and accountability to really impact true change. And we identified through a lot of our data dives that we were trying to intervene our way out of a core problem, and we can't do that. So, you can't sit here and intervene with students that, and then identify like, okay, well, we're going to try to work with this group of students, and then it's really a core issue. So, we also like to think about athletes. So, we recently had our onboarding for our teaching and learning facilitators, and a lot of times in education, we like to work in silos, and even the best athletes, so, not that I'm saying I'm a fan, but like think of the GOAT, Tom Brady, right? He still had a coach, but he was the quote-unquote greatest of all time. And even the coaches have coaches in their ears telling them, these are the plays you need to make, this is what you need to do. And, but for teachers, we expect them to go in and figure it out on their own. And so, our goal is to try to take away that pressure and decision-making to have a thought partner and help you to improve your instructional practices, which then in turn is going to improve student outcomes. So, with these positions, you'll see that we have three levels of support, and they vary in their, they, it's scaffolded down based on needs. So, our Group As, are those are going to be our BT1s, or they are new to Dare County schools, or they are a principal recommendation, or they have a grade level or subject change at secondary. BT2s, or for Group B, it's BT2s and 3s, or a teacher might opt-in, so those could be your teachers who just want to improve their practices willingly, or that could also be principal recommendation. And then Group C is going to be your opt-ins, so those may be, again, a teacher coming and wanting to just improve practices, or it could be on-demand coaching, where they're just like, hey, we have this Ufly, I need to just learn how to do it real quick. And so, you go in and just provide a quick support, and then you can touch base periodically, but it's not a coaching cycle. And then Group C, or then PLC support, so that could be a grade level support or a content area support for them. And then what that, what support, what that support might look like is the coaching cycles, and that includes identify, learn, and improve, and Reese is going to go into that in just a minute. And then on-demand or opt-in is support for teachers on specific curricula or needs-based items for them, or then PLCs for data analysis, curriculum planning, or grade level, or subject support, and the frequency is as needed. So, I'm going to hand it over to Reese for this section.
When we think about instructional coaching cycles, there are many different names for the steps of the different cycles, but all the cycles follow a same general progression. And so, the names that we're using are identify, learn, and improve. So, identify is whenever you go in and you help a teacher identify a gap that's causing a breakdown in learning for students. That might happen in different ways depending on the experience level of the teacher, the content area that's being taught, or the preference of the collaborating teacher that the teaching and learning facilitator is working on, but the end result, we're going to figure out what is the gap that's leading to a breakdown of achievement. Step two is learn. So, that is going to be the opportunity for the teaching and learning facilitator to set up an intentional learning opportunity for the collaborating teacher. And then step three is improve. So, we're going to take time to practice whatever that new skill or strategy is and improve our practice over time. So, the specifics of each of these steps might vary a little bit based on the experience level of the teacher. It might look different for a beginning teacher than what it might for a teacher who's been in the classroom for seven or eight years, the content area being taught, or the preference of that collaborating teacher that the teaching and learning facilitator is working with because we want to honor our teacher's professional experience and their autonomy whenever we're working with them. So, and for identify, that might be a teaching and learning facilitator recognizing a missing routine for a beginning teacher, and then setting up opportunities for that teacher to design a routine to fill that gap, or it might be them helping a more experienced teacher recognize another teacher in their grade level that has a strong instructional routine that they can go observe and then learn something from that process. For learn, it might be a time where the teaching and learning facilitator comes in and models for that teacher, or it might be a time where they practice a strategy together. And then improve might be the collaborating teacher practicing with the teaching and learning facilitator in an empty classroom. It feels really silly, but it can have huge impacts whenever you practice that a few times before you get in a classroom full of students. Or it might be co-teaching in the moment so that teaching and learning facilitator can give them that on, in-the-moment feedback, kind of like where Katie mentioned, a coach during sports, right? They give you feedback in the moment. You try something, it doesn't work, and they say, try it this way. So, the specifics can change based on whatever the collaborating teacher needs and is comfortable with, but the cycle is going to remain the same. We're going to identify a gap, learn a new skill or strategy, and then we're going to improve by practicing that strategy, and the outcome is always going to be the same, which is when we're looking for improved student experiences.
What she said. So, this is Holly.
I was really confused when she said GOAT. I was certain she was going to reference Michael Jordan, so I don't know where, I don't know where Tom Brady came from. So, who are included in our instructional leadership? The facilitators would be the four of us that you see standing before you, and the attendees for our training will not only- And the attendees for our training, not only were the teaching and learning facilitators, but also the principals and assistant principals that sort of have buildings with the teaching and learning facilitators, and instructional technology facilitators. For those of you who are not familiar with the role of an instructional technology facilitator, historically, they've been tech-heavy. But in the last three to four years, we've really pushed to make it so that they're instructional leaders in their building, and they're helping teachers better utilize the technology that we have available, not only the hardware, but the software to truly impact student learning. What we found is that we wanted to make sure that the people who were coaching our teachers, the teaching and learning facilitators, and the instructional technology facilitators, were using the same language. And so, we made sure that they are included in a lot of these critical coaching conversations, so that our teachers, when they're receiving those coaching opportunities from ITFs, that's gonna be more on-demand. We wanna make sure they're receiving the same language to make sure that we're all pointing in the same direction as we reach our goals towards student achievement.
So, we had our kickoff with our teaching and learning facilitators on August 1st. And we were very intentional with that professional learning because that was really a lot of, or 75% of our instructional coaches are coming from interventionist positions previously. And so, a couple, and then we have one outside that came from a surrounding district. And then two of them were from classroom teacher positions. And so, there was a wide variety of experience. But then also, we wanted to make sure that we were very specific with, this is a new role. This is not a continuation of what we've done in the past. This is, you know, we're setting the stage for this to be a really successful position. I'm really excited about it. And I know that the people behind me are too, because this has been a passion of ours. And I think, or I know this is gonna be great. So, we worked really well, what we did on August 1st was to, we really wanted to build a deeper understanding of the role and responsibilities. Again, setting the stage so we're not having the same old, same old. And that's why we wanted principals there for the first hour. And we were intentional with the activities we did with them there. So, they understood, like, this is the direction of where we're going. And this is how you can support this learning. And then we provided tools to help principals and the teaching and learning facilitators determine collaborating teachers. So, who are they gonna work with right off the bat? You may choose to have them support just a school-wide for the first couple of weeks, just to let them get their bearings. And then you're really focusing on your, with your BT1s that are walking fresh out of college and/or a lateral entry teacher. How are you supporting them so they are set up for success out the gate? We explored the coaching cycle and how it can lead to changes in practice. So, Reese led that discussion through modeling and a little bit of modeling. We're gonna do more of that throughout the year, but really so they understood kind of what they were working with. We shared the common language. And I think that is so important, like Holly said, that we have that discussion and we're using the same wording. Because when you start to have two different or three different terminologies that you're using, it makes, it confuses people and it leads to frustration, and that's not what you want. And then we provided resources to jumpstart implementation, including a portfolio template that they will use to track their, for their evaluation tool, because it's a different evaluation tool that they're gonna use in this role. And then also a coaching tracker for accountability purposes. So, the current status. So, building administrators and the teaching and learning facilitators are using a work plan tool that we provided them to go through data. And it's not just saying, you're not just saying, okay, this is the teachers I want, these are the teachers I want you to work with. You're digging through data, you're looking through EVOs, you're looking through M-class, you're looking through their end-of-year assessments. And so, to make sure that you're being really intentional and with a specific target, or your target audience really is your BT1s. Because they're gonna be the ones walking in that are gonna need the most support. And it's, I think it's one in four BT1s identify that they're not gonna come back because they are so overwhelmed. And so, we're trying to cut that down for Dare County. And then we, so they are working through that before school starts with their building administrators. And then who are the ones that they are gonna identify as more direct support? So, next steps. We are going to be providing ongoing professional learning for our teaching and learning facilitators. We're working out a schedule that we can have consistent meetings with them because they are going to be islands within their buildings. And it's really important for them to have a professional learning community amongst themselves so they can really learn. And this is a new role, and it's a new role that we've had district-wide in Dare County ever, right? And so, we wanna make sure that we are providing the support so they are as successful, as successful as they can be. And building administrators will also receive ongoing support for this as well because they are new positions. And if you don't have any follow-up and professional learning, it can easily just fall into a pattern of they're doing the same old, same old. And we are also, there are funding opportunities for this type of program, and we are looking into these to help us with this. And we are currently pursuing additional funding through a competitive grant that is due this Friday. I'm not stressed at all. And we should know if we were approved by December. But regardless of the approval for the grant, we are creating an ongoing collaborative professional learning calendar to make sure that these positions are successful and are doing what is in the best interest of students and helping our teachers have what they need to do that.
So, that is all I have for you. Do you have any questions? That's all we have.
Does anybody have any questions for the team, the Dream Team?
Board members, I did wanna go back in. This, this goes all the way back to the ESER positions. When those positions were expiring, we looked at those positions and said, okay, there's some benefits to those positions. How can we save as many of those positions and the good things that they were doing? And then add some things, targeted things, like beginning teacher training or, or the professional development that we're doing with our administrators to get used to these positions in our schools? How can we make them better? And, and this team has just taken that. And the things that they put together, the training that we've already done has been fantastic. They've got it laid out, so it's not a one-shot deal. The training will continue throughout the school year to make sure this works, support our beginning teachers, as well as our, our strong teachers in our buildings to make everybody better. So, I, we're thrilled about this, and I can't wait to see how this works out.
We're excited.
Thank y'all for the work.
And this team right here, I have to give some huge props to them because nobody can do it by themselves.
Thank y'all again.
Thank you.
Next item will be unfinished business. Ms. Hitch?
Sure. You have in front of you four policies that are up for second reading for the board. They've been vetted by your policy committee. And the cover sheets give you kind of information about what has been edited from the policies.
Is there a motion to adopt a policy? That has been presented?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we, or a motion that we adopt the second reading of these policies.
Motion by Ms. Brower.
Ms. Brower?
Second by Ms. Ballance. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Aye carries.
Next, under unfinished business is the early college. I'd like to give you just a brief information before we go into a vote. Mr. Bassnight and myself was at the May, June's meeting with the commissioners talking about capital improvement funding. And it was tied in with the capital improvement funding. And I asked Mr. Woodard at the time to freeze the funds to move forward with the early college until we had a community meeting in July, and that was taking place July tonight. Mr. Bassnight, has always done an outstanding job of presenting this information, not only several times to the community, but also at the, at the community meeting there in July. So, what I'm asking tonight is to have a board to approve that I return back to Mr. Woodard and have him to release the funds to go forward with the early college.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we request that Dare County Board of Commissioners to release the funds previously approved for the Dare Early College project.
Have a motion second by Ms. Ballance. Second by Mr. Woody. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any ayes? Motion carries. So, I'll be reaching out to Mr. Woodard to ask him to go ahead and release the funds and move forward with the early college. Next, we're gonna turn to new business, and I'll turn the meeting back over to Ms. Hitch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These are policies that are on for, that are on for first reading.
And I wanna, for the school trips, this was one of the ones that we had requested that Mr. Blackspot go back and talk with the administrators on that. So, they, the administrators on those out-of-district trips and things like that have looked over these and are comfortable with the way they were presented on first read. So, just so you guys know that when you go back over and review them, that they have been vetted by our administrations.
Sounds good. Mr. Bassnight has already gave an update on the donation from the ABC Board. So, now I'm maintaining a motion to accept the donation.
Okay, now I'm gonna do it. Is it now? Okay. I got it. Mr. Chairman, I move we request, I move we accept the donation from the Dare County ABC Board as requested.
We have a motion by Ms. Ballance to have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Payne. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any ayes? Motion carries. Ms. Bassnight, thank you so much for the donation. And please go back to your board and thank them for that. Next on the agenda is Mr. Eden, if you'd like to come up.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board, and Superintendent. In June, we issued a request for qualifications for architect services at Mano High School Fieldhouse, Hatter Secondary School Cafeteria, First Flight High School Auxiliary Gym, Hatters Elementary Expansion and Programming, First Flight Middle and Elementary Expansion and Programming, and other unnamed projects over a five-year period. The general scope of the architect services included preparation of design and drawings, development of documentation, construction documents, bidding and awarding of construction contracts, and administration of those contracts with the project manager. As a result of the RFQ process, Oakley Collier Architects were deemed the most qualified of the submissions received, and a five-year master agreement was created. There's no costs associated with this process. A service order will be created as each project gets underway. So, Superintendent and I recommend the board approve the AI master agreement with Oakley Collier Architects as presented.
And to be clear, this is not any guarantee, like, we're not paying any money. We're just saying, these are the architects we're gonna use for these projects over the next five years.
Right. The master agreement is a five-year agreement that just locks us into an architect, so I don't have to go through and bid architectural services for each project.
So, this will save us time in the long run and money, right?
Absolutely. This gives us a chance to negotiate their rate. And with our board attorney, we lowered some rates to make them actually go away. So, it does save money in the long run as well.
Perfect.
So, do I have a motion to approve the master, master agreement with Oakley Collier Architects?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the master agreement with Oakley Collier Architects as presented.
Motion by Mr. Payne, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brower. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, buddy.
Thank you.
This is exciting.
Good job, Ian.
Thank you, Ian. What'd he say?
This concludes our business meeting tonight. So, I'd like to turn it over to our board members for ending remarks. And I'd like to turn it to Mr. Payne, starting it out for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excited about a new school year started, starting. Former educator, I look forward after just a long summer, getting prepared, having the students back. So, looking, hope the teachers and staff have recharged their batteries and ready to roll because it's coming. Glad to see you guys here, our student advisors. And it's good to have you guys here. Ms. B. Bassnight, thank you once again. We thank you several times, but for the funds from ABC and from the commissioners, it helps a lot. So, thank you very much. And also, prayer still go out to Mr. Commissioner Wally Overman for his speedy recovery. I've always said, seniors, take a look at COA. It's the beginning of your senior year. Take a look at what COA has to offer. It's free. I like free. For your first two years of college and any CTE classes that you can take. So, COA, I like COA. And beginning of the new school year for elementary. It's funny, I put this down for comments, and we had a presentation on the reading. And I had parents, elementary students, please read to your kids. That's very, very important every day. So, looking forward to, great program, great program. You did a great job. So, parents, students, read as much as you can, especially in elementary school. Looking forward to a new school year. Thank you.
Ms. Ballance?
I'm so glad to see you guys here. It's gonna be an exciting year for you. Excited to see what we have coming up into the new year. Lots of great things, looks like, has happened over the summer. Some good collaboration. I'm looking forward to convocation and our new hire orientation this week. And we have a new doctor on our staff. And I want a huge shout-out because I'm gonna get teary-eyed. She works so hard. But Beth, Dr. Beth Rooks knocked it out of the park and in all of the chaos, managed to attain her doctorate. And I am so proud of her, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Woody?
Yeah, I'm just excited on a new school year, all the great things that you guys are gonna do. So, that's about all I got.
Just like everybody else, looking forward to a new school year and our new student advisors. I've known one of them since he was eight years old. And just signed off on part of his Eagle project today.
Brower?
Yeah, like everyone else, I'm looking forward to another great school year. Haven't taken an informal poll in my house yet, but I think we've got maybe two that are just itching to get back into it and two that maybe want the school year or the summer to go a little bit longer. But all good things must come to an end, and I am looking forward to serving the board for another year.
Mr. Bassnight?
Thank you, sir. Before we adjourn, I'd really like to thank our technology director, Ms. Holly King, our building data managers, our director of transportation, Mr. Alex Chandler, and Ms. Deanne Bateman for the extraordinary work that they've done in transitioning us from Power School to Infinite Campus. When the Department of Public Instruction notified us that North Carolina would be moving away from Power School and rolling out a new data management system called Infinite Campus, it created a little bit of anxiety in all of us. This group of Dare County School staff members has been hard at it since January, making this transition as painless as possible. Infinite Campus is designed to do everything Power School did, and so much more. Some of the areas that parents may see or use Infinite Campus for in the near future might be paying student fees, sending messages, district alert messages like weather delays or emergency communications. It will even allow parents to select their language preference in the parent portal. Channel 3 TV recently did a news story on our rollout. And during an internal meeting with Infinite Campus, Ms. King was told that the news story had made it all the way to Infinite Campus headquarters in Minnesota, and that they had shared the story on Dare County Schools with their national attendees. Holly, can you pull up that video? I'd love for you to show that. Roll that beautiful, no, it's not beans.
Education news now. The North Carolina Department of Public Instruction elected to bring in a new vendor for its technology. And Dare County Schools wanted to be one of the first school districts in line to implement it. News 3's Will Thomas shows us why.
Communication is key for school districts. Dare County Schools is hoping a new student information system will only strengthen it for our community.
Parents need to know what's going on in our schools. They need to know what their children are doing, how they're performing, the thing, the classes that they're taking. And improving that communication at whatever level we can is always something we're striving to do.
Infinite Campus is the new student information system that Dare County Schools has been implementing ahead of the new school year.
It's a one-stop shop. It's comprehensive. It has features that we don't see in any other platforms, including third-party. Significant academic planning. The ability for parents to be able to access academic records such as transcripts so they can print them in the comfort of their own home. It has a finance element so that parents can pay for prom tickets, pay for a field trip that's coming up right there within the portal. Those have not existed in any previous student information system.
The switch is a breath of fresh air for school leaders, especially after voicing some of the challenges- some of the challenges with the previous technology to the state.
I think the state did a very good job of looking for exactly what we had asked for, and providing us with a lot of those, those resources. It has been a big lift.
In the coming days, existing Dare County Schools families should be on the lookout for how they can access the system. In NAGC, Will Thomas, News 3.
I apologize about that shirt. I now have a polo hanging in my office in the event I ever need it, so please accept my apologies. But we are thrilled, the work that has been done to get us to this point. Literally, we're hoping that DPI not only heard what we were asking, but they've implemented all those things that we needed, that were lacking from Power School, and we're looking for a much smoother transition in communication between home and school, as well as for our staff to be able to use it in our schools. So looking for big things from this, and can't thank this group that got us there enough. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
Thank you, guys, once again, for the opportunity to have us here, and it's something that we will not take for granted. I think it would be interesting to see if we could add some sort of tobacco use, like warning, into the ABC broadcast, just to sort of address that, like we were talking about earlier. And I also think it would be interesting to get student opinion on the early college, or at least notify students, or inform them, to see what it really is, and how they can take that opportunity and run with it.
Thank you. Tobias?
Thank you, guys, for having us out here again. I'm so excited to get into the new school year, and see everything that, you know, we have in store, and all the new policies and everything implemented. And along with the new policies, this Infinite Campus thing, I just want to ask you guys, how were the students informed of this? Because over the summer, I received a couple texts, emails, calls from buddies of mine. They were asking, hey, I want to see my classes for the upcoming school year, but I can't get into Power School, I can't get into, you know, Rapid Identity, I can't see my classes like I used to, and I don't know the new program that we're using. And I wasn't made aware of it, and none of my friends were made aware of it. So I was just wondering, how was everyone informed of this program change?
Mr. Bassnight?
Sir, if Infinite Campus, we had to shut down Power School to transition all of the data that literally was located in Power School, had to be dumped into Infinite Campus. And that shutdown took place, Holly, June or July?
June 28th.
And that's why nobody has been able to access that, because they had to take everything that was in Power School, and literally migrate it to Infinite Campus. Now, we're getting to a point right now, that we're getting, we're starting to open up Infinite Campus, so you can get in there and check your schedules and things like that. But that, that was just one of those, we, people couldn't be going in there and changing things when all that was changing over. So we're getting to the point now that we're going to roll it out. It's going to look very different, so it's going to take some getting used to, but I think it's going to be a lot easier to use than Power School ever was. Is that fair, Holly?
So when will they be able to see it?
Parts of it can be logged into now. When will they be able to see Infinite Campus, students?
When will they be able to see their schedules? When the principals will tell them that I will be able to see them?
When the principals say that they can be opened up, which should be anytime.
Yeah, they're going to clean out the guidance council's all of this transition, so they just want to make sure it's been set.
Yeah, I think that what Toby might have been saying was just informing people that that transition is happening, because I honestly was not even aware of it until today, so.
And that's exactly why I wanted to have a moment tonight to mention that.
Awesome, yeah.
So it started tonight.
Wonderful.
I thought you were mentioning this about the parents in May and June that communicated the transition.
Oh, okay, wonderful. Thank you so much for answering my questions.
No problem.
Well, I couldn't have said it any better than these two, but I just want to thank you guys for having us out here again, and I'm excited for what we're going to do, and most importantly, I'm excited to work with my peers. Thank you.
Thank you. What a wonderful summer. It's been crazy, it's been fast, but it's been a lot of hard work behind the scenes, and I certainly know that. And I just want to thank everybody for that, and get ready for a wonderful start of the school year. So with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Payne, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Balance. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.